I now give the floor to the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Excellencies, the fighting in Ukraine must stop. It's raging across the country from air, land, and sea. It must stop now. Russian missiles and air bombardments have been pounding Ukrainian cities day and night. The capital Kiev is encircled from all sides. In the face of the continuing attacks, Kiev's 3 million residents are being forced to seek safety in their homes, improvised bomb shelters, and the city's subways. The Ukrainian government has distributed a meaningful number of arms to the population with the stated objective to participate in the defense of the country. According to NHCR, half a million Ukrainians have fled across the country's borders. Although Russian strikes are reportedly largely targeting Ukrainian military facilities, we have credible accounts of residential buildings, critical civilian infrastructure, and other non-military targets sustaining heavy damage. This escalating violence, which is resulting in civilian deaths, including children, is totally unacceptable. Enough is enough. Soldiers need to move back to their barracks, and leaders need to move to peace. Civilians must be protected. International humanitarian and human rights law must be upheld. The sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders must be respected, in line with General Assembly resolutions. Mr. President, we are facing a tragedy for Ukraine, but also a major regional crisis with potentially disastrous implications for us all. Yesterday, Russian nuclear forces were put on high alert. This is a chilling development. The mere idea of a nuclear conflict is simply unconceivable. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, we face what could easily become Europe's worst humanitarian and refugee crisis in decades with the numbers of refugees and internally displaced multiplying by the minute. I am grateful for the compassion, generosity, and solidarity of Ukraine's neighbors who are taking in those seeking safety. It is important that this solidarity is extended without any discrimination based on race, religion, or ethnicity. The neighboring countries will need all our support in the days and weeks to come. The United Nations will continue to assist with these efforts. Mr. President, on Saturday, I spoke with President Zelensky and assured him that the United Nations would not abandon the Ukrainian people and conveyed our determination to enhance humanitarian assistance. Even before the events of the past week, the UN was providing some 3 million people on both sides of the contact line with humanitarian assistance. The United Nations is now working 24 times 7 to access humanitarian needs and scale up the delivery of lifesaving support to many more people desperate for protection and shelter, particularly women and children, elderly people, and those with disabilities. We are fully committed to staying and delivering for everyone affected by this deadly conflict across the country. Some of our personnel are expanding existing programs and others are preparing new operations to get help to those who need it fast. I want to highlight three concrete actions. First, I've allocated 20 million US dollars from the Central Emergency Response Fund to support emergency operations along the contact line in the eastern oblasts of Donetsk and Luhansk and in other parts of the country. These will allow us to help more vulnerable people get the basics: shelter, food, water, and else care as soon as possible. Second, I have appointed Amin Awad as the UN Crisis Coordinator for Ukraine. He will liaise with the government and with all relevant actors on the ground, supported by the resident humanitarian coordinator and UN Country Team. At the same time, we are bringing together partners in and outside the country and surging personnel into the country. Third, tomorrow we will launch two coordinated emergency appeals for Ukraine and the region: one that addresses escalating humanitarian needs inside the country, including rising internal displacement, and another that responds to the needs of people crossing international borders to seek refuge in countries neighboring Ukraine. As we ramp up our efforts, it is essential that the safety and security of UN and associated personnel in Ukraine are protected in accordance with international law and that humanitarian access to vulnerable people and communities is guaranteed. I call on all sides to uphold their obligations while our freedom of movement of humanitarian personnel and to facilitate safe, rapid, and unimpeded passage of humanitarian relief. I also urge the international community to mobilize in support of our funding appeals to address the needs of all those displaced by this crisis, as well as other vulnerable groups whose numbers will only grow as the fighting escalates. Mr. President, humanitarian aid is vital, but it is not a solution. It is simply treating the worst impacts of the conflict. The only true solution is peace. The attack on Ukraine challenges international law and the multilateral system rooted in the UN Charter. Some of the possible consequences of a worsening conflict are terrifying to contemplate. Regional tensions are rising. The latest security measures underline the high stakes for all. The economic repercussions of the crisis will have widespread impact, and I count on every member state to live up to the principles of the Charter. Mr. President, the guns are talking now, but the passive dialogue must always remain open. It's never too late to engage in good-faced negotiations and to address all issues peacefully. I hope that the direct talks now taking place between Ukrainian and Russian delegations will produce not only an immediate halt to the fighting, but also a path towards a diplomatic solution. I welcome and encourage all peaceful efforts to end the bloodshed and halt this conflict. I thank the countries who have offered to host and facilitate negotiations. The United Nations is ready to support such efforts. Mr. President, war is not the answer. It is death, human suffering, senseless destruction, and then immense destruction from the real challenges facing humanity: the climate crisis and biodiversity loss, vitally needed socioeconomic recovery from the pandemic, healing the divides of race and gender, and so many other pressing 21st century challenges. Humanity cannot afford to be locked in a mindset that dredges up the worst of past centuries. We need to look forward as United Nations to overcome the scourge of war. We need to focus on solving problems, not making them worse. In cities around the world, people are taking to the streets and demanding an end to war. People in Ukraine want and need peace, and I believe people in the Russian Federation do too. We need peace now. Thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Mr. President, Secretary-General. For the first time since the United Nations was born, there is a full-fledged war in the center of Europe. Everyone in this hall and everyone in the world knows that Russia, and Russia alone, started this invasion, now facilitated by Belarus. This war was not provoked. It was chosen by someone who is right now sitting in the bunker. We know what happened with the person who sat in the bunker in Berlin in May 1945. Before I continue with my formal statement, I would like to switch to Russian and invite you to put on the headphones. Because I would like to read from the screenshot of the smartphone of a killed Russian soldier. That's an actual screenshot from someone who is dead already.
Alorsha. Alorsha, how are you doing? Why has it been so long since you responded? Are you really in during training exercises? asks the mother of the killed soldier. Moments before he was killed. Mama, I'm no longer in Crimea. I'm not in training sessions. Where are you then? Papa is asking whether I can send you a parcel. What kind of a parcel, Mama, can you send me? What are you talking about? What happened? Mama, I'm in Ukraine. There is a real war raging here. I'm afraid. We are bombing all of the cities together, even targeting civilians. We were told that they would welcome us. And they are falling under our armored vehicles, throwing themselves onto the wheels and not allowing us to pass. They call us fascists. Mama, this is so hard. And this was several moments before he was killed.
Imagine, if you want to just visualize the magnitude of the tragedy, you have to imagine next to you, next to every nameplate of every single country in this General Assembly, more than 30 souls of killed Russian soldiers already. Next to every name of every single country in this assembly, 30-plus killed Russian soldiers. Hundreds of killed Ukrainians. Dozens of killed children. And it goes on and on and on. So just imagine those killed people next to you when you will listen to my formal statement. Big militarized powers seeking for geopolitical greatness has launched a full-fledged military offensive against a smaller neighbor aimed at invading the country. Deadly airstrikes dropped on civilians' heads across the entire country and the Russian troops crossed Ukraine's borders from the territory of Russia, Belarus, and the occupied parts of Ukraine's Donbass and Crimea. Does it remind you of something, doesn't it? Indeed. Very clear parallels could be drawn with the beginning of the Second World War, too. And the Russia's course of action is very similar to what their spiritual mentors from the Third Reich employed on the Ukrainian land 80 years ago. Just one, the most recent example. Example of human sufferings, example of war crime. As all of us were on our way to the General Assembly today, the Russian army shelled with Grad multiple rocket launcher systems the residential areas of the city of Kharkiv, the second biggest in Ukraine. Innocent civilians have been killed and wounded. The exact numbers is very difficult to estimate because of the warfare while the negotiations are still underway at the border with Belarus. We therefore express our gratitude for overwhelming support that made this decision on the emergency session possible. We are grateful to the President of the General Assembly for his taking care of this idea well in advance. We appreciate the engagements engagement of the UN Secretary-General who has taken a very strong stance in support of peace, in support of the UN Charter. We have been prompted to call for an emergency special session as the level of threat to the global security has been equated to that of the Second World War. Or even higher, following Putin's order to put an alert Russian nuclear forces. What a madness! If he wants to kill himself, he doesn't need to use nuclear arsenal. He has to do what the guy in Berlin did in a bunker in May 1945. The Security Council addressed the issue of the Russian war against Ukraine, and the decision was not adopted due to the obvious reason. The country attempting to occupy Ukraine since 2014 has occupied the seat of the Council's permanent member since 1991. Therefore, we do not accept the Russian logic that the Security Council was unable to act due to one-sided and unbalanced approach. The only guilty party is the Russian Federation. Distinguished delegates, Russia uses all its military potential to attack Ukraine and has begun redeploying reserve units on the border with Ukraine. It fires cruise and ballistic missiles at cities, attacks with aviation tanks and artillery, sends subversion and reconnaissance groups which mark residential buildings in preparation for the air attacks. Russia's missiles are now aimed at destroying the infrastructure objects. They targeted the radioactive waste disposal site near Kiev, the fuel base in the town of Vasilivskiv that is effectively a Kiev suburb. The objects of logistic infrastructure, including bridges, airports, and water reservoirs, remain among the targets. Such towns as Shostak and Stanitsa-Lugansk near Lugansk are now nearly destroyed, as well as residential buildings in and around Kiev and Kharkiv. The Russian forces seized the Chernobyl Nuclear Power Station at the part of southern Kherson region, including the north Crimean canal. Due to the active moving of Russian heavy militaries through the Chernobyl exclusion zone, the radiation level has increased rapidly. In the Black Sea, Russian warships deliberately attacked two civil vessels under the flags of Panama and Moldova approaching Ukraine. These constitute a flagrant violation of the international law of the sea. Incredibly, one of the vessels had the Russian crew. Still, it was attacked by the Russians. Russians keep attacking kindergartens and orphanages, thus committing war crimes and violating the Rome Statute. Hospitals and mobile medical aid brigades are also targeted by the Russian shelling and the sabotage groups working in Ukraine's cities and towns. The Russian military fired on ambulance crews in the areas of Zaporizhzhya and Kiev. In Akhtirka district of Sumy region, Russian tanks shot down a bus with civilians. Later, the Russian military did not allow ambulances on the spot. As of today, 352 people, including 16 children, were killed on the Ukrainian side, and 2,040 Ukrainians, including 45 children wounded during the first five days of the Russian invasion. And this number is growing nonstop. I have already told about the morning shelling in Kharkiv, and we cannot really estimate at this moment how many were killed. In response, Ukraine has activated its right for self-defense according to Article 51 of the UN Charter. The Russian troops are suffering losses: aircrafts, helicopters, tanks, trucks, personnel. The aggressor forces have already lost more than 5,000 in manpower during the first days of aggression. Excellencies, the General Assembly should be vocal in demanding from the Russian Federation to stop its offensive against Ukraine, in recognizing Russian actions as an act of aggression against sovereign and independent state, in demanding from Russia to immediately, completely, and unconditionally withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, in demanding from the Russian Federation to reverse the decision related to the status of certain areas of Donetsk and Lugansk regions of Ukraine, in demanding full compliance with the provisions of international humanitarian law. The General Assembly should also be clear with regard to the treacherous role of Belarus and its involvement in aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine. Distinguished members of the General Assembly, what is happening now in Ukraine has already had the security and humanitarian implications for all of you. Immediately for Europe, a bit later for the rest, including in terms of food, security, energy security, financial markets, collapse of the economies. Last September, my president said, while delivering his statement at the high-level segment of the 76th session of the General Assembly, and I quote, "I understand that criticism of the UN is often heard, but we criticize ourselves," end of quote. "If we fail to respond now, we will face much more than criticism. We will face oblivion. It must not happen. Now it is time to act, time to help Ukraine that is paying now the ultimate price for freedom and security of itself and of the world. If Ukraine does not survive, international peace will not survive. If Ukraine does not survive, the United Nations will not survive. Have no illusions. If Ukraine does not survive, we cannot be surprised if democracy fails next. Now we can save Ukraine, save the United Nations, save democracy, and defend the values we believe in and that Ukrainians are fighting for and paying with their lives." The Russian delegate will speak shortly. Putin has done everything to delegitimize the Russian presence in the United Nations. But I wonder if the Russian presence in the United Nations has ever been legitimate. I wonder if ever this whole, this assembly voted in accordance with paragraph 2 of Article 4 on admission of the Russian Federation to the United Nations, either in December 1991 or in January 1992 or wherever thereafter. I want to ask the delegates whose countries voted for admission of the Russian delegation to the United Nations to raise their hand to confirm that Russia was admitted to the United Nations according to the Charter. Please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hand if your country voted in the formal session of the General Assembly in reply to the letter by President Yeltsin dated December 24, 1991, when he told the United Nations that Russia would like to be a continiator state of the demolished Soviet Union. Anyone? Shall I put my glasses if my vision fails me and I don't see any hand raised? Any country? Anyone voted for Russian membership? I leave you with that and think about it when you listen to the Russian delegate.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished colleagues. In recent days, the Ukrainian issue has made headlines, global headlines, and has now been given pride of place at the UN Security Council and now the General Assembly. At the same time, Russian actions are being distorted and thwarted, and there is a number of incredible fakes is staggering with the use with media outlets and social networks proliferating these lies. For this reason, today I wish to focus on the real reasons for the crisis that has emerged and its possible consequences. I wish to emphasize the following: The root for the current crisis lies in the actions of Ukraine itself. For many years, it sabotaged and flouted its direct obligations under the Minsk package of measures. Just recently, very recently, there was a hope that in Kiev they would reconsider and that they would indeed comply with what they signed on to back in 2015. For that, first and foremost, what was necessary was direct dialogue as set out in the document between Donetsk and Lugansk. However, the latest confirmation from the senior leadership of the country was that Ukraine was unwilling to engage in this dialogue and unwilling to take steps to grant special status to Donbass as set out in the Minsk agreements. And this was actively supported by the Western patrons of Kiev. And this definitively persuaded us of the fact that we no longer have a right to that we no longer have a right to allow the residents of Donbass to suffer any further. Insofar as Ukrainian provocations against the people of Donbass in February did not end, in fact, they escalated. The leadership of DPR and LPR turned to us with a request to deliver military support in line with bilateral agreements on cooperation, which were arrived at with their recognition, concurrently with recognition. And this was a logical step to the ongoing, the persistent aggressive actions undertaken by the Ukrainian regime. The Ukrainian authorities, which has of late been actively armed and incited by a number of states, were under the misconception that with the indulgence of Western patrons and sponsors, they would be able to address the issues in Donbass militarily. It is difficult otherwise. It would be difficult to explain the ongoing intensification of shelling and sabotage acts on the territory of the republics, which I mentioned. The people of Donbass and Lugansk continued to have to take shelter in basements. There was a flood of refugees entering the Russian Federation, and yet still, the nature of the Ukrainian armed forces operation did not change. And yet, Western partners did not wish, turned a blind eye to this, and they merely echoed Ukrainian tall tales about the allegations that Donbass people were shelling on themselves. The worsening suffering of the residents of Donbass is something that has left Western sponsors unmoved. In recent years, this discussion at the Security Council General Assembly, there was no empathy whatsoever, no compassion for the people of Donbass and Lugansk. It seems that these four million people simply don't exist for them. And as a result, the ongoing threats targeting the people of LPR and DPR, given the lack of prospects for addressing the problems in the area under the Minsk operations due to the failure to fulfill them, the Russian president took a decision for a special military operation to be carried out in Donbass. Occupation of Ukraine is not part of this, of these plans. The goal of the special operation is to protect the people who for eight years were subject to torment and genocide by the Kiev regime. To that end, there is a need to demilitarize and denazify Ukraine. We further will strive to hold accountable those who carried out countless brutal crimes against the people, the residents, including residents of the Russian Federation. This decision was taken in line with Article fifty-one of the United Nations Charter with a sanction of the Federation Council of the Russian Federation in pursuant of the Agreement on Friendship and Cooperation with DPR and LPR. I wish to recall further that the principle sovereignty and territorial integrity of states is something which we are being accused of breaching vis-à-vis Ukraine. The Declaration of Principles of International Law on Friendly Relations Between Peoples was adopted in nineteen seventy, and it needs to be instinctively complied with with respect to states, I quote, "conducting themselves in compliance with the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as described above and thus possessed of a government representing the whole people, belonging to the territory without distinction as to race, creed, or color." End of quote. Today's government of Ukraine is no such government. Moreover, during the special military operation, Russia has been exercising its right to self-defense from a regime that has been striving to gain access to nuclear weapons. A president of Ukraine explicitly stated this on eighteen February during the Munich Conference. And this, I would recall, this statement that he delivered was met with applause by the participants of this conference. At the same time, Ukraine is seeking membership in NATO where there is Article Five in effect and has territorial claims to the Russian Federation. Hence, by leveraging Article fifty-one of the UN Charter, not only is Russia protecting itself from the nationalist threat, but Russia is also seeking to uphold the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter on the soil of Donbass and Ukraine, ensuring that the main goal of the United Nations be upheld, namely to prevent succeeding generations from a scourge of war. Unfortunately, it behooves us to note the very negative role played in all of this by Western colleagues led by the United States. Instead of compelling Kiev to comply with these obligations, instead, they are merely inciting Kiev, egging it on, repeating the senseless mantra that their obligations in the Minsk agreements are not being complied with the Russian Federation, which I should like to recall and emphasize, the Russian Federation is not a party to it. Moreover, our Western colleagues have shamelessly inundated the country with weapons, have sent to the country instructors and effectively incited Ukrainians who are facing a one hundred twenty thousand-strong military contingent prompted them to engage in armed provocation against the Donbass. This thereby, the Western countries have created a bubble that cannot but pop. Distinguished colleagues, discussing today, in this discussion, it behooves us to note that back in two thousand eight, Russian President, the NATO Bucharest Council cautioned that members of NATO should think three times before proudly stating that Ukraine and Georgia will join NATO. And this was portrayed as some kind of a great compromise, which was immediately met with action plans undertaken in Ukraine and Georgia to join the alliance. At the same time, in two thousand fourteen, there was a brutal anti-constitutional coup which took place in Kiev, as a result of which nationalists and radicals seized power. And their policy was to create an anti-Russia in Ukraine and to ensure that it join NATO. And I will revisit that. For us, Ukraine joining NATO is a red line. First and foremost, from the military strategic level, the deployment of NATO infrastructure in that country would compel us to adopt measures in response, and this has placed us at the verge of conflict. For this reason, in December twenty twenty-one, we proposed that agreements be arrived at with the US and NATO for security assurances to be provided to the Russian Federation. However, our extended hand was unceremoniously rebuffed by Americans and NATO representatives. It was proposed that we continue to discuss secondary issues without consideration of our concerns. Moreover, the question was not addressed as to the how the freedom of choosing alliances as set out in the OSCE aligns with the principles of indivisibility of security, which is of great importance to us. Probably many of you wonder what should be done now and what role can the United Nations play in addressing the Ukrainian crisis? We believe that the UN can and should play its role, help to bring the stakeholders' positions closer together and to eradicate the causes of conflict. The key role here, according to the Charter, should be played by and lies with the Security Council. However, attempts to calmly discuss this issue is something our partners did not deign to undertake. For this reason, the Russian Federation on twenty-five February voted against the anti-Russian and anti-Ukrainian draft resolution of the Security Council. It is anti-Russian, this document. There is no need to explain why. It suffices to have a cursory glance at the document. Why is it anti-Ukrainian, the document? Because this document, beyond any doubt, is inconsistent with the root interests of the Ukrainian people insofar as it is an attempt to salvage and to cement in Ukraine those authorities who brought the country to the brink of tragedy. And this tragedy has been ongoing for eight years now. The main reason for our negative vote was not what was in the draft, but what was not included in the draft. If the sponsors were to attempt to make it even remotely balanced, then they would not have left out issues that need to be addressed in the context of the Ukrainian issue. Specifically, what was unaddressed was the way that the anti-constitutional coup in Ukraine, in Kiev, in February twenty fourteen, resulted in the Maidan junta seizing power and using it against the residents, shelling civilian areas with artillery pieces and multiple rocket launchers and raining bombs on the people of Donbass and Lugansk. What was unaddressed was how the Ukrainian authorities, with the tolerance and indulgence of Western sponsors, consistently and cynically shirk their obligations to implement the Minsk agreement. At the same time, at the line of contact, Ukrainian death squads, first and foremost comprised of neo-Nazi radical elements, methodically, day after day, shelled the residential areas of DPR and LPR, killing women, children, the elderly. This is ongoing today. How can we fail to mention the fact that Ukrainian nationalists have been perpetrating crimes for all these eight years? The protesters against Maidan and Nadesa were burned alive. The peaceful protesters and the Maidan were shot out, killed by snipers. Investigation into these tragedies by the Maidan regime was deliberately swept onto the rug. At the same time, the perpetrators in the Nadesa tragedy are well-known. They are flaunting their presence. And an alternative investigation into the reasons, into the acknowledgement by these snipers, unambiguously emphasizes that the slaughter on Independence Square was a provocation by the leaders of Maidan. We specifically last year held an informal Security Council Ario-formal meeting on this issue in order to provide colleagues at the Security Council more information about this. However, in response, at best, we heard from Western sponsors merely hackneyed cliches about Russian propaganda. What kind of a text resolution on Ukraine can there be in the above-mentioned circumstances? There is a need to ensure that the text, there was a need for the text to have a frank assessment of the role in inflating the Ukrainian crisis played by Western colleagues, who not only were present in the Minsk negotiations, but effectively gave Kiev carte blanche to carry out any actions or steps that would be unthinkable for any civilized states. With tales being spun about the triumph of democracy in Ukraine, the Maidan authorities and nationalists engaged in, with impunity, murdering political opponents, persecuting opposition, shuttering opposition television outlets, where there could be some relatively objective information provided. Six of those television channels were shuttered under Zelensky alone. And how could we fail to mention the fact that the country was flooded with weapons, which were then turned on peaceful civilians in Donbass? The responsibility for what is taking place right now lies at the feet of the current Ukrainian leadership as well as our Western colleagues. Today, we wish to emphasize that this has been inflated by the lies, deceit, misinformation from the Ukrainian armed forces and the nationalist Western media outlets increasingly shamelessly are portraying our military operation as a result, as a negative consequence. We constantly hear lies, fakes about indiscriminate shelling of Ukrainian cities, hospitals, schools, kindergartens. The Russian army does not pose a threat to the civilians of Ukraine, is not shelling civilian areas in areas and cities where Russian armed forces have taken control. And these areas are seeing citizens living their lives normally, basic infrastructure, transportation, local infrastructure, and law and order is being upheld. And this includes the electrical station, the power plant, which is jointly patrolled by Russian representatives and the special Ukrainian police who are present in the area. The Chernobyl plant is also operating normally. The threat to the residents of Ukraine presently is posed by Ukrainian nationalists who have effectively taken hostage the residents of Ukraine, and they are using them, they are hiding themselves behind them and using them as human shields. There is abundant evidence from ordinary Ukrainians that nationalists, despite their protests, have been deploying heavy equipment and multiple rocket launchers in residential areas. This is an egregious violation of international humanitarian law, which needs to be duly condemned. Effectively, this is the same tactic that is being used by ISIL terrorists. All of the responsibility for the possible repercussions lies at the feet of the Maidan regime. The residents of Ukraine are also threatened by the unfettered, uncontrolled radical elements giving to all of those who wish, including criminals who have specifically been released from prison. They are now receiving weapons, and the looters and moraders and criminals are now using them to target civilians. There is sufficient and abundant evidence of this from residents of Kiev and other cities. This demonstrates the recklessness of Ukraine authorities vis-à-vis their women. Just now, we received a letter from the Ukrainian Human Rights Civic Organization, the Social Policy and Social Protection Institute, the name of it is Birezhnoy. For eight years, this body has been informing international structures about how the neo-Nazism was born and proliferated in Ukraine and how it has been and continues to be held at the state level. I briefly quote today: "The opiate of the recklessness and lawlessness of neo-Nazis in Ukraine was that condemned criminals have been released from prison. They have carried out grave crimes, murders, etc., only in Kiev. Those who are willing receive twenty-five thousand machine guns without any documentation. Killings, looting, crime is ongoing. Those so-called territorial defenders of Ukraine shot at a car, killing parents and a girl, a young girl. Two children are in hospital critically wounded." The former acting president, following the unconstitutional coup in February twenty fourteen, Turchinov, called on all citizens who are not indifferent to slaughter Russians throughout the territory of the country. And this, despite the fact that the most recent document for Ukraine in twenty nineteen sets out that sixteen, almost seventeen percent, and actually far more people are Russian there. Now, against the Russian Federation, in social networks and information, war has been unleashed, insofar as evidence of destruction of civilian infrastructure by Russian military does not exist. Ukrainian attacks and accidental attacks bear out the fact that Ukrainian nationalists are carrying out this violence. Social networks have training manuals about how to create fakes to taint our military operation. Throughout Ukrainian social networks, there are one point two million such pieces of fake news. And the correspondence that was read out by the Ukrainian ambassador, that conversation that was read out is also a part of these facts and these fakes. This is well-known. We also did not support the draft resolution for this issue to move from the Security Council and be addressed by the General Assembly Special Session today. We were guided by the fact that this measure proposes that we register that the Security Council failed to comply, to uphold its main responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security. And at the same time, there was not even a hint at an attempt to find a constructive solution at the Security Council, attempts to circumvent the position of the Russian Federation, to disregard the position of the Russian Federation, runs counter to the very bedrock of the United Nations. There is a need to find common ground, regardless of our Western partners' attempts to avoid this, including when they disregarded our legitimate concerns in connection with NATO policy and Western countries' breach of the core principles of the OSCE on indivisibility of security. To conclude, Mr. President, I wish to state that the Russian Federation did not begin these hostilities. The hostilities were unleashed by Ukraine against its own residents, the residents of Donbass and all of those who are dissenters. Russia is seeking to end this war. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Iceland, Norway, Republic of Moldova, Georgia, San Marino, Andorra, Monaco, and Liechtenstein align themselves with this statement. Mr. President, I want to thank you for convening us here today and for the Secretary-General to be here and for all of you colleagues being here. It's very important that the facts are heard and fully understood and that this body is able to take the appropriate decisions after the fact that the Security Council, thanks to the veto by one country alone, stopped this council from taking that decision. Let me start by expressing the European Union's full solidarity and support to Ukraine and its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression from Russia. from Russia. Since our meeting here in the General Assembly last week, the situation has dramatically escalated, despite tireless diplomatic efforts, including at the highest level. Russia has decided to turn its back to peace, to the rules-based international order as defined intra-alien in the UN Charter, to diplomacy and to the international community. Russia's military attack against Ukraine has already caused an alarming number of deaths, injured, internally displaced, and refugees. We condemn in the strongest possible terms the unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by Armed Forces of the Russian Federation in violation of Ukraine's independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We also condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine. And we call on both Russia and Belarus to abide by their international obligations. We're also alarmed by Russia's raising of the nuclear alert level. We call on Russia to de-escalate and to immediately return to the previous alert level of its nuclear arsenal and to avoid any actions that could risk the safety or security of the nuclear power plants in Ukraine, a non-nuclear weapon state under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty. Russia bears full responsibility for this aggression and the resulting destruction and loss of life. We demand from Russia to cease its military operations immediately and unconditionally and to withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We further call on Russia to engage in earnest in dialogue with a view to political and diplomatic solution. Russia's actions grossly violate international law and are in clear breach of the UN Charter and the OSCE Helsinki Final Act, as well as Russia's specific commitments to respect Ukraine's sovereignty and territorial integrity under the Budapest Memorandum of 1994. This is arguably the biggest aggression in Europe since the end of the Second World War. It follows similar Russian aggression against its neighbors in 2008 and 2014. We underscore our firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Georgia and of the Republic of Moldova, and we are closely monitoring the situation in the region. This assembly has a responsibility immediately and effectively to acknowledge and address Russia's actions. Failing to do so will erode trust to the rules-based global order with the UN at its core and the UN Charter itself. It would send the wrong message to perpetrators of such aggression and aggravate similar risks to other UN member states in the region and beyond. We stand firmly by Ukraine and its people. We deplore the loss of life and human suffering.
Mesdames et messieurs, bonsoir. Notre programme en langue française commence maintenant.